So, thank you for your patience, folks. We're getting started a few minutes late because we were listening to Andrew Simons, our town auditor, explain the audit report, which will be one of the first items that will take up under the full Select Board meeting. So I will call to order the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board for Tuesday, January 2nd. It is now 6:12. And we have present tonight a full complement of our Select Board. We have Kurt Hathaway, Joe Donardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Geddy, and Sharon Russell. So if you would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to review the states, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing, please. And I would ask for a moment of silence for our longtime Rutland Town Fire Department member, Tom Tumalevitz, who died recently. So our thoughts are with his family, and we thank Tom for his many years of service to the town. Thank you. Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the Select Board minutes for December 19th.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the minutes by Joe Donardo, seconded by Matt Geddy. Any additions, deletions, discussion? And I need a clean copy. And I don't have my folder, Bill. Well, I guess now I gotta clean up my. Thank you. All right, all in favor of the minutes, please say aye. Aye, so it's unanimous. Next on the agenda, any board member announcements? Sharon? No. Matt? No. Kurt? No. Joe? No. Okay. Update from the Select Board Chair. Just a reminder that articles for the January edition of the Circle are due, for the next edition of the Circle are due January 15th. So this will be the pre, I believe, the pre-town meeting edition, so please do get your articles in. And question on department heads' reports, including the Select Board Chair report that's needed for the town report. What's the deadline?
The deadline would be by the pre-town meeting of the 16th.
So January 16th?
Both will be preferential, but 16th is doable.
Prefer the 12th. Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any questions from the floor or public comments? And we'll start in the room. Anyone in the room not otherwise on the agenda? Anyone on the screen not otherwise on the agenda? Okay. Yes.
Hey, Eastwood Animal Clinic.
Okay, Eastwood Animal Clinic. Yeah, is that, is that a police department question?
Probably Rooster.
Chief, is, does Rooster see the folks at Eastwood Animal Clinic? Carrie? Nope. Okay.
That would make sense.
That looks like a Rooster bill. Rooster, a police dog bill. Okay. Not that we have, you know, that Rooster. Okay. So we will move first to action item A, which is the board to meet with town auditor Andrew Simons to review the annual audit. Some of the Select Board came in during some of the discussion. Your Finance Committee has met with Andrew to review the various documents he is asking us to look at, and you have in your packet these documents, so if you can do it one more time, maybe an abbreviated version, and at each one, we can just ask if there are questions, because you folks may have heard enough that you have questions that you want to pose. Okay?
All right. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. So in your packet, there's four reports, the audit report, governance letter, management letter, internal control letter. The report is going to focus on here is just the audit report. Again, I'm not going to go over too much of it. I guess I'll start out. Does anybody have any questions regarding the audit report?
Only because I was here, and I listened to everything. When we were just, you were discussing the highway account, and there was expenditures beyond, I think, what we've budgeted. Are the grants reflect in there somewhere that the money we took in to offset some of that, I think?
Yes, so we did gross up the revenue. The revenue's up in the revenue section, the 200,000 Culver grant. And then all the Culver expenditures are down below. So in essence, they do offset each other with some excess Culver expenditure.
And then I would think it was the same with the paving for Town Line Road. We got a grant for that also. So there would have been money coming back for the paving of that section of road, I believe.
From the state of Vermont, correct? Yes. Yep.
So we didn't come out too far behind?
No.
Okay.
No, and when we, and when the town does budget, we are looking to reduce the highway restricted fund balance. And so one way of accomplishing that is to budget low for the paving, and so that the excess eats away at that restricted fund balance.
Thanks. That was just the only question.
I'll just go over a few items, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. So as I mentioned to the Finance Committee, the town does operate on a modified cash basis of accounting. It's considered a special purpose framework. This does exclude receivables, payables, fixed assets, long-term debt. So the financial statements are very simple in nature. Just a quick reminder to the full board, I know I mentioned this to the Finance Committee, we are independent of the town. I do like to remind everyone of the fact. We are not part of the town's internal control structure. So during the audit, we did have some proposed audit adjustments, which will be provided to Carrie, and she will post those to Nemmer. Once that is done, the Nemmer trial will agree to the financial statements. There was one report reclass entry. It reclasses the education property taxes from the general fund to a custodial fund. And just a reminder that this audit covers the period July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023. In the audit report, pages 1 through 3, real quickly, is the independent auditor's report. And I am happy to say that the town received an unmodified or a clean audit opinion. We'll quickly go over some of the financial statements.
Nice work, Carrie. Thank you.
Yes, I do want to thank Carrie and Susan for all their hard work during the audit, for answering our questions and all the documentation requests. They're very responsive and very quick to get us the information. So again, just, just some real quick highlights of the report. I'll try to be very abbreviated. The first section will go, does everybody have a copy of the audit report? So on page 6, this is what's called the governmental funds. This includes your general fund, the ARPA money, and your non-major governmental funds. We do a calculation based on total assets and revenues to determine what is a major fund. If we determine it's a major fund, it does have to be reported separately as its own fund. Just to mention real quick, the non-major governmental funds include your depreciation funds and the Center Rutland Bond Fund as well. So some quick highlights, cash did go up 1.2 million, which we discussed in the Finance Committee meeting. The cap, general capital improvements fund balance went up to 1.8 million. That's an increase of about 258,000. Just remind the full board, it was voted on that any surpluses in the general police, general rec, and general fire, if there's a surplus, they get swept over to the capital improvement fund. The long-term debt repayment did go down as expected. That represents the fiscal year '23 principal and interest payments. The public safety building under the ARPA fund column, that did go about 600,000, which was expected. And then new this year is, on the very bottom, it's an assigned fund balance for police services. And again, this represents the settlement funds from the two local hotels, offset by allocated expenses that were agreed upon by the Finance Committee. Any questions? Yes, Matt?
Looked through this a second time. You may have touched on this, the difference between pages 4 and 6. Cash balances there.
Yes, so page, page 4 and 5, two different types of financial statements. There's government-wide financial statements, which combine your governmental funds and your enterprise funds. It's a combination of two fund types on page 4. On page 6, it's called fund financial statements. So on your fund financial statements, it breaks it down into each relevant fund, governmental funds, enterprise funds, which is water and sewer, and then your fiduciary funds. Because you're not full cruel basis, there's not a whole lot of difference between page 4 and 6, but I like to focus on page 6 because it's most relevant to the town.
So the difference in the cash, in restricted cash total, page 4 versus page 6, is that enterprise?
Yes, business-type activities in that center column there, the 1.3 million. Again, that's your water and sewer fund. It's the ONM charges that are collected on the town users, including the Floyd Heights users. All right, on page 7, other report. This is basically your income statement for the governmental funds. Just some, some major highlights for it. The ARPA fund, we did receive the last payments of the ARPA monies, 615,000. We did receive quite a bit of interest income this year on the town's funds that are held at TD Bank. In total, we had about 151,000 of interest income, which was expected. Located down in other income, this does include the settlement funds from the hotels, which approximate 300,000. And as you'll notice, at the very bottom, or towards the very bottom, there's a line that says excess of revenues over expenditures. So if you look across that line amongst the four columns, we have surpluses in each of those fund types. For a combined total surplus of 1.2 million for the year. Real quickly, on page 8, this is your budget to actual. To me, I think this is probably the most important statement for the town. I do recommend the town look at their budget to actual reports, at least on a monthly basis. I'll go through some of the quick variances over on the right-hand side. Net property taxes is, actual receipt is down compared to budget. And again, at the end of the year, there was delinquent taxes still to be, to collect it of approximately 250, 285,000. So that contributed to the variance that you see over on the right-hand side. Grants is up 257. Again, a big portion of this is the Culver grant of 200,000 included in there. If we keep moving down, under the interest on vested funds, we have $111,000 variance. Again, we have quite a bit of money in the bank. Interest rates did increase significantly over the past year. Local options tax, this should be a familiar one for everybody. We have been over budget for most of the years that we have been collecting local options tax. We are conservative in budgeting for that figure. The other income, over budget, 342,000. The biggest component within that category is the settlement funds from the hotel. There are other variances, but there's quite a few accounts that make up that one balance. Under general government for expenditures, this included some initial expenditures for the public safety building, about 168,000. Although they're not budgeted for, they are coming out of a restricted fund balance. Even though we see a negative variance there, it was to be anticipated for those types of expenses. Public safety, $72,000 variance. That is mainly due to the overtime at the southern end of the town for policing services. And public works, that is mainly due to paving and to the culvert that was replaced. And again, there is the revenue up above that does offset those expenditures. But again, we have to gross them up from an income statement standpoint. And lastly on here, the other biggest negative variance is the debt service, 132,000. The reason for the variance here is we do not budget property taxes for it. It is, it does come out of a restricted fund balance that was approved by the voters. Anybody have any questions on that?
This would be a good time to ask, because this has got, this is the meat of stuff, right?
It is. The budget to actual is, in my opinion. The rest of the financial statements, I'll just mention what they are, certainly ask any questions. There's not much to them, not much activity, so real quickly, page 9. It's called your proprietary funds. It's your water and sewer fund. Page 10, this is the income statement for the water and sewer fund. This shows the ONM charges coming in. It also shows any allocations for water usage, which you'll see included in the miscellaneous operating revenues of 39,000. That does fluctuate year to year depending on allocations given. Expenditures, there's nothing significant within each category, pretty routine expenditures. Page 11 is your statement of cash flows. Again, nothing to really discuss on there. Page 12 is what's called your fiduciary funds. They're basically pastor funds. The trust fund column, that is your investments for the cemetery and fire site. The custodial fund, that was new about two years ago. That was a GASB requirement to break out the education property taxes, since they are not the town's money.
Will we go back to 11 for just a minute?
Yes.
Payments to contractors and engineers. Was that the post-road water line?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Page, I think we're on 13. This is the income statement for the fiduciary funds. Under the trust funds, not much activity. It's not significant to the financial statements. We do have a deficit for the year, mainly because of the realized losses on the investments. The custodial fund, 8.5 million. Again, this is education property taxes collected and distributed to the school district. Starting on page 14, through the remainder of the report, this is the town's footnotes. These do not change much each year. Again, modified cash basis. Most of the accounting pronouncements that come out do not pertain to the town. The only one of accordance is page 21, which I think some of you might have heard towards the tail end of the previous meeting. This is your long-term debt footnote. It's good to monitor this, because this does relate to the restricted fund balance of 380,000, which means that we can cover the next, or fiscal year '24, '25, and '26 bond payments, including principal and interest, with that restricted fund balance.
So how many years left do we have left to pay off the Center Rutland Fire Station bond?
Yeah, I believe the maturity date is November 15th, 2033.
It was a 20-year note, and we started in 13.
2033?
Yep, but it falls into, because it's November, it falls into fiscal year '34.
We'll have seven years that we'll have to.
Find the money for, or tax, tax for, yeah.
Right. Again, the rest of the footnotes, the biggest one in there is your VEMR's pension. Again, that information comes directly from the state of Vermont. They do have an audit completed each year. They provide that information, which is required to be disclosed in your report, even though you do not disclose or record the pension liability.
So here's a question. Who holds, there's money that's owed to our employees and VEMRs. Who holds that?
The state, basically. They have it invested.
Okay.
Investments.
And so this is just to show that we have participated, paid in as we need to.
Correct. It's the town's participation into the plan.
Okay.
And then on page 27, the final page, subsequent events. Again, we dispelled it was necessary to disclose the additional settlement funds, which we expect to continue until the program at the hotel has expired. Again, no significant concerns were noted during the audit. Carrie and Susan were very helpful. I do appreciate all their assistance. I will be providing the audit adjustments to Carrie in the next couple of days. She'll get those posted. And at this point, we are ready to finalize the report and to issue the final report. Anybody have any questions or concerns regarding the audit?
Just to be clear on the, on their restricted funds.
Yes.
Going to cover three more years, including the year we're in the midst of now.
That is correct.
So a few more years after that, but we can worry about that another day.
No, it's, it's, it's something to be, to recognize and start thinking about.
Good. All right, so any questions? And then there are two, three other letters that, that were included in your packet. Do you have any questions about the other letters? Okay.
If a question comes up, feel free to email or call me at the office.
Yes, and you've been very responsive when questions have come up, and you're very clear about that line. You don't work for the town. You are our auditors. And I do appreciate that very much. So is there a motion from the Finance Committee to approve the audit?
We moved the board to approve the audit, subject to one item regarding reconciliation. Andrew is double checking.
Yes.
Following this meeting.
Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not?
Explain that one reconciliation for the members.
Oh, sure. Okay.
There was a comment. There was a comment in one of the letters about a reconciliation of an account that Andrew did not find, and Carrie commented it may be in a place where, other than where he looked.
We're going to verify that tomorrow, and if it is correct, we will remove that item from the letter.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor of approving the audit, subject to the tomorrow's looksee, please say aye. I'll vote aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And a big thanks to Andrew for walking us through and for all of the work on the audit. We appreciate it very much.
And also for your help with various other things, like the bond, and this, that, and the other, when you get called to come in and say, yeah, this is how you can do that. We appreciate that.
You're more than welcome.
Very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. And keeping that clear line, because we know if we screw it up, we will hear from you. So better to ask you in advance how we can do it right. You've been very responsive, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right.
Okay, so that takes care of action item A.
Hang on for just a minute.
Uh-oh. There are displays of indignation from the back row.
Yes, and the last time I gave you, when you accused me of trying to kill you.
All right. First item on our, well, next item under department head.
Oh, my God.
To stop the infighting that is occurring, we'll call on Chris Clark, town fire chief, for his report.
Happy New Year.
Maple.
Thank you, Chris. Happy New Year.
Well, our year is over. We had 190 fire calls for 2023, which is a couple more than last year, so our numbers are going up every year just by one or two. The new truck has been ordered. They have no date of delivery for us yet, but when they get one, they'll let me know. And other than that, I really don't have anything to tell you, unless you have some questions.
I think Bill sent out the letters about the private fire hydrants, so are we getting responses?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Chris, numbers for the McKinley Station for electricity and fuel?
Yeah, I did do that, and I forgot it. I am not home at the moment, so I cannot give you that number right this second. Sorry about that.
Okay.
I will. I'll get it out tomorrow and text it to you or something.
Yeah, because we'll need that for the general budget.
Yeah, we've got to get some number tonight, maybe Carrie.
Does Billy know it off the top of his head?
We haven't been able to get the information we needed as to the heating sources and the estimated usage for the building.
So, but we had, like, for McKinley Station, we know how much fuel was delivered there.
Well, yeah, but that was fuel oil, and this is going to be propane.
Right, we were just looking for a number. So that was what I was hoping.
The architect and the engineering could.
They're, they're going to be, I don't know if we're going to get anything on use. I was just trying to figure out a number that we actually used last year for McKinley, for fuel, oil, and electricity, and then we'll modify that to the best of our abilities for a nine-month or eight-month year.
Yeah, we didn't get any, any information that was going to be of any, any help.
We may have to just ballpark it.
Yeah. Anything is better, you know.
We'll be here for a while.
And then.
Must call back.
And then the other portion of that was to deduct those, that portion from Center, or from McKinley, from Chris's budget, because it doesn't need to be put in twice. So we'll have to try to figure that out.
Okay. Okay, anything more for our fire chief? If not, thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Carrie Clark, town clerk and treasurer.
Hi there. I don't really have much to report tonight either. I mean, we've had the holidays, so just getting the town report pages ready to go now that the audit numbers are in finalized. And moving forward from there.
Okay. Any questions for Carrie? Just a reminder that first install, or the January installment of taxes are due January 10th. So if you haven't made your payment, please do.
Next Wednesday is the due date, and everything has been posted in its usual places. So the school has something on their board. The paper has some reminders. Facebook has reminders. Newsletter has reminders. We have a board out front of Town Hall. And before I left today, it was about 50% collected for the second installment. It could have gone higher since I left, but all the major players have paid their taxes for the second installment, so it's basically just residents now that are left. Meaning, like, the major players are, are big corporations and, and businesses, so we've gotten receipts of all of those so far.
Okay. If there are no other questions for Carrie, thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you.
And thanks for your help on the audit, too.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you to Andrew for all his help and cooperation with me. Their company is great.
If Mike drops dead, don't blame me.
Okay. Okay, that was unrelated to our town clerk and treasurer. So next, Mike Delahanty, town first constable. Hi, Mike.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Thank you, and to you as well.
So nothing, nothing major. The one thing I wanted to bring up is in regards to the Diner Run Mall. Recently, between myself, probably Chief Dumas, and the state, we've been getting a lot of calls about people entering that property. Uh, recently, between myself, probably Chief Dumas, and the state, we've been getting a lot of calls about, uh, people entering that property again. And, I've been up there twice in the last couple of days, and on the backside towards the Sears entrance, um. There's an overhead door that the bottom section has been torn off of the, of the lower of the section of the garage door. So anybody can make entrance to this place, so, I to, I talked to Officer Plakis about it, and he told me that the owners are aware, um, but. They're out, they haven't done anything about it, and, so, it's been at least a week since, uh, the first call I know of came in, and maybe it was probably before that. Um, I don't have any contact info from them, for them, maybe Chief Dumas does, I'll gladly make that phone call, but the building. Needs to be secured, because right now, it's, it's a free for all.
Yeah, it does, Bill has contact information for them, and perhaps it is time to hear from the owner slash management of the mall? Is that something the select board would like to do?
At one point, we talked about whether or not this property qualifies under our ordinance with. Dilapidated buildings, or whatever we adopted to get things cleaned up, and I wonder if it's, it's at that time where. John Paul does what he did to get other places taken care of.
Okay, so John Paul's on, so I'll pose the question to him as well.
I mean, if there's an unsecured door, then I can issue a order as the health officer.
Yeah, you, you know JP, what I'm talking about is the, um, derelict properties, or properties that, like the place on Perkins Road that you intervened to get taken care of. Um, we passed an ordinance here a while back, that helped us, I believe, um, the Flori Plaza and some other places. And, and does that pertain to this property as well, even though it's much larger, it's still the same type of abandoned building that's a nuisance?
It, it does fit the definition, however, it doesn't meet the requirement that it be out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. Because it is, in essence, its own neighborhood.
Alright.
I remember correctly.
That's why, rather than use that enforcement, I think the health officer would have a little bit more teeth.
Uh, John Paul, what about the fact that the, uh. Rank is connected to that building and separately owned?
Yes. Part of the neighborhood.
Pretty stark contrast between those two pieces.
Right. Different sides of the track, if you will.
Yeah. Just, I was just trying to think of some way that we could motivate the owners to be more on the ball. We've been dealing with this, since the place closed three, four years, and.
Seems to me, they said, two years ago, August, they were gonna have that taken care of, and here we are.
Well, remember, they did put in additional security.
Well, where is it?
Well, I, and maybe that's why we need to have the conversation again.
I think you're right.
I'm quite sure, and remember, it did work for a while. Alright, because the calls were not coming to the Rutland Town Police, they were going instead to their own security service. It looks like that might be not working, so probably time to call these folks in and have a talk about. Security and long-range plans, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll ask Bill if he will first provide the information to, uh, Mike Delahanty on who the contact people are, and then. If Bill would also reach out on behalf of the board and invite the mall management to come in. And have a short-term, long-term discussion with us. Good. Thank you.
Perfect, yeah, Bill, I just, I just emailed you, Bill, a picture from up there, I don't know if you got it or not, but.
Okay, anything, any select board questions, um, for Mike? Or requests? I, I do have one from a neighbor on Creek Road who is. Hearing, there, there is someone with a muffler problem, and also a very heavy foot on the accelerator, who is a morning. Person on Creek Road, so we would ask that you might either bring the speed cart back or up enforcement for a bit and see if we can. Have a little help with that problem.
You got a time?
Or, well, it, it used to be like seven fifteen, but now it's somewhat earlier in the morning.
We had a similar issue. JP was very good about, um, collecting this person's, uh, extra cash.
Excellent.
You know, five thirty, six o'clock in the morning, and I said to him, I would have liked to have seen the guy's look on the face when the blue lights came on at like five thirty in the morning. But he made a very good effort to get out there and sit at the front.
Okay.
And he caught him.
Well, thank you, so. I've conveyed the citizen's request.
Perfect, we're on it.
Appreciate it very much.
Alright, take care, have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, Mike.
Um, Ed Dumas, town police chief. Good evening, and happy new year to you too.
So, last, uh, actually this time here, we went to the end of the year because it's only a few, a few extra days rather than the two-week schedule. And for some miracle upon miracles, we only had one theft complaint from this last period, I'm not sure if the businesses were feeling generous and not calling in the theft. Or maybe the criminals just felt bad, or somebody gave them something and feel the need to steal, so that was quite a surprise.
Yeah.
Uh, for the year total, we have, uh, one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four. Calls for service, uh, we spent seventy-one percent of our time in the south end of the town. Some different from two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Um, so you've got. Um, three different, we've, we've got your, um, usual monthly printout.
Yep.
We've got your yearly stats on the south end cases, and we've got the southern Rutland Town Stores comparison.
Correct.
So, any questions for the chief on any of those three?
On top of our complaints, there's also approximately one thousand, uh, state police complaints in the town of Rutland, too.
And that's scattered throughout the town?
Correct.
Do they take care of those, or do they pass them through to you?
Uh, depends on what it is, if they're around, they take care of them, if not, they'll send them to us. There's probably a few that are just like, they took. They did them, and then they just had another case signed to us, so we would take care of it.
Um, so I noticed several sex offender registry matters, um. And we don't usually have a number of them, is that because there was some stepped-up. Reporting or check-in on the part of?
So what happened is, uh, Officer Plakis has taken it upon himself to take care of all the, uh, sex offender registry. Uh, violations in the town of Rutland.
Okay.
So, and he's very, uh. The lady in charge of it who gets a hold of him each month, and, uh, Officer Plakis is right on it, shall we say.
Good, well, thank you, Officer Plakis. Okay. Any questions? If not, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, John Paul Fagin, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable. Good evening, JP.
Hi, good evening, uh, not much to report, the steel frame is pretty much all up and starting to put some panels on. Uh, they, they worked a very aggressive schedule over the holidays. That's really all I have to report.
Yeah, I noticed I drove by there, what, Saturday morning, and I think there were six or eight people on site working.
Yeah.
I did too.
Yes.
Okay, questions for JP, um, with any of the hats that he wears?
Yeah, we've already talked about the. All the stuff, so.
Yeah, we have. Okay, thank you, John Paul.
Have a good night.
You too.
No Barbara tonight.
No Barbara, okay. Uh, Mike Rowe, town rec director.
That I didn't bring you anything either. Thank you, I'm feeling faint.
Uh, nice throw, by the way.
You look like Kojak there.
I cut my hair. Sorry, I'll grow it longer next time for you, mother.
No, no, I just, you know, just reminded me the.
Um, I'm just waiting for the rink to freeze at school, and hopefully that'll help, and then we could start up some skating nights. And, other than that, basketball kicks off tomorrow night, so if you're not. Too busy, we have a five, a six, and a seven o'clock game right at school, and you can catch most games, uh, for rec on Wednesdays and Saturdays right at school, just check the schedule online that Bill has graciously posted. Come out and support our local youth, um, they like it when a big crowd shows up. Other than that, I don't really have a whole bunch, um, I did tell you that our sign was destroyed over at Dewey, I don't know if I told you that, the blue signs, the new signs that I had created.
Oh.
Um, I got a call from a resident about a month ago, and, uh, they decided to rip the sign down. Why, I have no idea. But they were ripped, they literally ripped it down, and it's no use, so I went with the heaviest duty. Sign, which weighs about five hundred pounds, and we'll think of a different way to anchor it, but we took care of that, and then thanks to Awesome Graphics, cuz they cut us a little bit of a deal. Once they saw the picture, they were kinda like, the same as me, why would that get destroyed? So that's why the sign's not there, if you go by there, it was ripped down, and I'm not gonna put it up till the spring. There's no need to, to do that, so just an FYI.
Okay, appreciate that.
Other than that, I think we're in, just moving along, plugging along, so, unless anybody has any questions for me?
Questions? Comments? Nope, thank you very much, so Wednesdays and Saturdays?
Wednesdays and Saturdays are our home games that we, that we use the school for.
Mondays and Saturday are Wednesday.
Wednesdays and Saturdays are our home dates.
What? No, but, okay, keep going, Mike, I don't know what that was.
Oh, good, Carter's excited, excellent, yes, Carter's, you can go watch Carter play, and you can go watch Little Getty play. Getty, right? Little Getty?
Yeah.
Um. So yeah, those are our home game times, and Bill has that right on the website, you can just check it out and see what grade level is playing. And of course, you can go any other day and check out the middle school if you'd like, like you did the other time, so they play on Thursday this week, if you have a Thursday.
Very good, thank you.
A few games, thanks, guys.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, Dave Sears, town road commissioner.
Good evening, everybody, happy new year.
Happy new year, Dave.
Uh, Sharon, good to see you back in the saddle, I missed the last meeting, I'm not sure if you were there, but welcome back.
Thank you.
Um, the last time I was there, I, I mentioned that we had started doing some culvert survey work. Took us about two weeks, and we pretty much got everything in town done, for the most part. So if we don't have any work from now until. I don't know, two thousand thirty-five, I guess we got culvert work to do that'll keep us busy. Uh, also starting to work on the, um, paving list. Gonna start, uh, putting that together here pretty quick, I, I got some stuff in mind, so, just a matter of doing some. Calculations and kinda getting a bid put together. Uh, Quarterline Road, we've been up there two or three times since just before Thanksgiving, um. We spread some gravel and did a little bit of. Quote-unquote grading, cuz we don't have a grader, but, um, it seems to be holding together, I was really shocked after all the. Wet crappy weather we've had, that, um. It's actually holding up, so we'll take that. Um, I spent about a day, probably not quite a day, going over the stuff for the Windmere. Property that they want us to take over, uh, we need to have a committee meeting on that to go over what was and was not supplied, which was more was not, but. Um. We, uh, had a bit of an ongoing incident on the corner of Killington Avenue and Sunset. Um, it's been going on since the spring, finally got that all worked out. The homeowner had, uh, drainage tile coming from the house, and it was.
Right.
Full of roots, uh, it took me all summer to convince her of that, but she finally had a contractor come in, and they. Ended up digging up a bunch of it, and, uh, took out, I believe, thirty feet or so, it was full of roots. Um, and we did go across the road, and there was a, at the outlet, there was a, a bit of a belly in the pipe, it was like five feet back from the end of the pipe, six feet back, so. We cut that out and relieved that, so she's flowing now, and hopefully that's gone away, cuz I can't take that anymore.
Okay, well, yes, she, she had called me as well, and I, it was during the holidays, I didn't get back in touch, but it sounds like. Situation's taken care of now?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I've talked to her several times, and, um, she seems happy now, so, we'll see.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, on to a little bit of a winter update, um, so far, the contractor's been out seven times this year, which is nothing, really. Uh, the, thus far, we purchased, uh, seven hundred eighty-six tons of salt. The building is full right now, we have, uh, forty, a little over forty-eight thousand dollars left in that budget. So, we're in pretty good shape. Talking about possibly a beauty or two coming in here in the next week or so, but. We're due. And on a, kind of a smiley note. Um, the highway guys, not me, but the highway guys. Were extremely interested in doing a Facebook page for the highway department, that is up and running. We have several. To my amazement, several followers, which I don't really understand it, but, um, they say it's good. And, uh, between the last time I was at a meeting in person and now, uh, well, actually, a few weeks ago, we got the, uh. Pictures of the people that, from the name the truck. Little thing from Town White Celebration, we got them in, got some pictures, got some, so they're up on, uh, our Facebook page. And, uh, I believe Bill has shared them on the town page.
Very nice.
Yeah. And then.
Cause we don't, we don't give any cash awa- awards or anything for winning, we just, but, some recognition is always, so thank you.
It, it was two adults and two kids, and, of course, nobody knew the difference when everybody was voting on them and everything, but, uh, everybody was like. Really happy about it, it was just like, kind of a really fun time. It was kinda nice. And then I don't know, there's a couple of things on action needed that are, fall into my category, I don't know if we wanna talk about those now or wait, I'm, either way, I'm good.
So, we've got the, uh, draft ordinance for streets and sidewalks. Now, this is an update of an existing ordinance, which was in effect for quite some time, I did cruise through it, um. A little bit, and I think in yellow highlighted, maybe I should turn to the highway committee for an update on whether. We're, what's your recommendation is with this?
Dave had gone through it, and, um, the only concern he had was the, um. Standards for like culverts, there was a few, few minor things, um, but to best of my recollection, he's okay with this as, um, drafted, aren't you, Dave? I think that's what we determined.
Yeah, yeah, there was a, a couple inconsistencies with the size of culverts required, and the rest of it was, uh. Basically administrative and typographical stuff, there was, those are the only two real issues that I had with it.
So is there a motion of some kind for this ordinance?
I would move that we, um. We call adopt or.
Amend, I think.
Amend, amend the, um, towns, uh, streets and sidewalk ordinance as changed.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by the members of the highway committee to amend. The, uh, streets and ordinance, ordinance as proposed in the draft. the uh streets and ordinance, ordinance as proposed in the draft dated 12/15/2023. Any discussion, questions or comments?
Question.
Question, Matt.
So on page three, there's a reference to attachment A that is highlighted. Is that what this is here?
The schematic?
Or is there something else? And hasn't changed? Is that where the culvert?
Yes, it's that.
This is it?
Yes.
Okay. And is that the part, Dave, that you were referring to where there were changes necessary or is that elsewhere?
No, I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm not really sure. There's a, there's a, there was a place in there where it called for a minimum of a 12-inch culvert to be installed in driveway crossings. And then there was a place further in the back that said um all uh, everything is, everything that's required has to uh meet AOT standards and AOT, and it references AOT requiring 18-inch. Or uh, no, it's 12 and 15, I think it was. I remember right. So that was, those were the, the questions that I, or the, the corrections that I had to go with the 15.
The standard says 15 and we were saying 12, but now they're in sync.
Matt, on the, on the second, this very second page, it has all the revisions that are part of the, all the changes that are, that are part of it.
Well, thank you for putting the history in too.
That's, that's, I'm adding that to all of them that I go through because it's missing in.
Yeah.
So I just don't think I saw that item in the highlights, but perhaps it was this uh changed the, the number of inches on the culverts.
Uh, page two.
Page two?
Yeah.
1.12.
Okay.
End of the first line.
We also got rid of galvanized because
Yep.
we prefer plastic, HDP plastic.
Yeah.
And that's state standard?
Uh, the state standard may allow galvanized, but it's best if we don't.
Okay.
I think. Nobody even uses it.
They're pretty hard to get in general.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty much everybody's using the plastic or wood, the high-density poly something or other, whatever.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll favor the motion to amend according to the draft. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
There's a signage.
I will have a, a real version for you to sign for the next meeting. Copy that has all the changes part of it.
Okay.
If you made any changes to its date, then it wouldn't be, it would be different, so.
Okay, so you fill it in with today's date?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
I have a, a modified version, which looks like what it will look like in the future. So and I, I didn't make a bunch of copies in case maybe change it tonight. So I'll have that for you for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. Um, and we also have road on highway type matters, the deliberative session on dire road.
And I still don't have the information we were requesting, so we'll have to sit on that a little.
From Mr. Mandela?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna.
And if I don't call him, I'll never get it. That's the problem.
Yeah, I, I mean, I went in the vault and rummaged around a little bit too, and I wasn't finding things, so.
I'm assuming that's just a map he's got from somewhere. So we'll get that. Oh, my apologies for this.
No, well, that's okay, but you know, if there isn't, it, it's not, my understanding is this is a survey that wasn't commissioned by him. It was one he was aware of, done by a neighboring property owner.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it is, but I'll see if I can get a copy of what he has.
Okay, good enough. Um, and then there's one other matter that's sort of, that, I had a call from a town resident today who was on one of the fire district water systems asking what we were doing about the water system study that we had talked about um doing a couple of years back. Remember that? Because there was some state money and, yeah.
Yeah, and we never proceeded with that.
Well, I think.
Wasn't Robert waiting for money to show up?
Robert was waiting more for the state to put some standards in place, I think, some regulations.
Yeah, maybe we need to reach out to him and see where that is.
Let's see if we can do that.
What was the gist of this study?
Um, the, the, the thought was, well, the state had quite a bit of money for what they call forgivable loans. And towns could use it to do things such as um inventory what their water supplies systems were in town and um do a recommendation for what areas needed upgrading or needed service. Um, so.
So I don't know if that came from my fire district, but we sure could use some of that.
That's, I, and I, I do believe it did.
I think that would had something to do with looking at a lot of these different things and see how to improve and replace or do stuff.
Either that or connect that section of town to the city, because it'd be heck a lot easier than dealing with all the rigmarole that we have to deal with on a regular basis. And when I say we, I mean the few select individuals who are putting in long hours and hard work.
Yes.
Primarily on a volunteer basis for their neighbors.
Yes. Um, so, and that's, and, and the study was to not only to find out what was going on where, but also to look into, you know, do we have areas of the town hooked up to West Rutland? To Rutland City? Um, do we create some other water system somewhere? Do we extend water lines as we did down on Ranbury Road? So it was all of that more comprehensive, long-term planning for our water system.
Let's please do that.
Okay, all right, so.
We've been wanting to do it.
Yeah, so let's, Bill, if you could maybe see where, or you already emailed him? Okay, very good. Um, and then maybe, we did have a water sewer committee, so, yeah, if we could maybe.
It was on that thing now.
Um, I think almost all of us.
Yeah, I think.
Did a bunch of us get put on the roof?
Yes.
All kind of, and that's one of those.
I know it was, it was me last year, me alone.
Yeah.
You alone? No, we wouldn't have let you on by yourself.
Last year I was on the island of me.
I think we did.
I don't know who's on it this year.
I think we did maybe make you chair, so.
Some different stuff. In the spring, we did stuff better.
All right, so let's see where we can go. That might go on our project board. Um, as something that we, okay. And I mentioned, you know, Dave is technically also our public works um person, so that's why I brought it up while he was still listening.
Good.
Okay, anything else for Dave?
Good.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Take care.
Okay, next up, Marcia Trophy and um Marie's gonna join us too?
I am.
Okay, come on up.
Well, Marcia.
Yep.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Um, before we begin, I just want to take this time to thank Chris Clark and the Rutland Town Volunteer Fire Department for their kindness shown to me, to John and to my sister-in-law and niece of the sudden passing of my brother.
Yes, the thank you, Marcia, for expressing your gratitude and um it's a loss for the town, so we're very sorry.
Thank you. Um, so right now we're um clearing up uh year-end issues with um freezing the 2023 grand list, uh sending reports to the state. And we're going to be doing that um this week. Um, the deadline isn't until um January 15th, but we're satisfied that everything is as it should be with the grand list and everything else. So we'll be doing that tomorrow. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we have um a couple of things in the packet. We have D, which is a Vermont Department of Taxes progress report regarding statewide appraisals and property data. Um, which I did go through. It was kind of interesting for both what was there and what they hadn't got to yet. Yeah.
Yeah, that was the preliminary report, so I really didn't want to get into too much in-depth tonight because there's really a lot more that's behind that, so it's uh just a preliminary progress report, but it's uh rather scary.
Well, I, I think the state is, a couple of things that, that I noticed. First of all, Rutland Town appears to be in a lower category, so we're in category E, which means we're out there about five years before we have to address this reappraisal issue. So that was a bit of a relief to me.
Correct, right.
And so I always start with, okay, when do we have to deal with this? So we're gonna have more information by then.
Well, as a department, we're gonna start putting together our um reappraisal uh forms, the form that we have to send to the state prior to initiating the request for proposals from um appraisers. Uh, we really would like to get a bid prior to the state coming down and saying, you know, this is what you have to do. Um, if we can do that, then we will be able to hire um an appraiser that uh, you know, fits our needs.
Okay, um and I, the, the other takeaway from what I read here, and correct me if I'm wrong, was this is not replacing our Lister system. It is only taking the reappraisal, the major townwide reappraisal piece away from us. Is, is that a correct read for me? So do you mind if I speak to this, Marcia?
No, you'll go right ahead, Marie.
Okay, um, so the, the law that's passed has put the, the state is going to plan on being the ones coming in to do the appraisals. Appraisals or reappraisals? Appraisals and reappraisals. Okay. So the language of the statute says that no Lister is going to be able to do an appraisal for tax purposes. Minus the education, uh completion of the education that the state mandates, okay? So it doesn't eliminate listers per se. It just changes and the question is, what will be allowed by the listers to go out? So like currently right now, we don't appraise and go out and make an independent valuation on people's property. What we're doing is working within a framework that was set by the reappraisal in 2013. Those numbers, those figures are based, are built into a system that we enter the information into. So right now, the fair market valuation of all the properties in Rutland Town are based on a 2013 stat- statutory reappraisal that was done. Okay, so any new builds are put in based in, it's those numbers that are put in. What the listers are challenged to do and our task to do is to know the information to put in. So, for example, you have to be able to go, if somebody has a new porch or a new building, we have new builds that we have to go look at. We have a system that we have to look at so that it's uh clear and concise for every single resident in this community of quality, condition and building, building guidelines, okay? So we have to look at the foundations. We have to look at the corners. We have to look at the shingles. We have to look at materials and we have to grade all that. But that is within the framework and guidelines that the states has provided through a national recognized building system called Marshall and Swift. That is information that we have. That's what our training has taught us, and so we can go out and do it. But we're putting the numbers into the system for the appraisal. So the state is saying, and this is where the confusion is and why the listers associations are all up in arms, is that really technically a Lister is doing assessment for tax purposes, but they're saying an assessment can be done by a Lister for tax purposes. So does that mean a new porch that's being put on that we have to go and measure and everything? We can't do that anymore? Or does the state have to come down? Those are the questions that are being addressed by the association. Um, but they're requiring, so every Lister will have, if the town does continue with elected listers, they'll have a year to complete the state training to be able to continue on. But there's a lot of work that doesn't even involve appraising. There's property transfer tax returns. There's current use taxation. There's homestead declarations. There's, there's a lot of work in between that has nothing to do with going out and appraising a property. So the towns will still be able to have listers because there's a function that the state isn't going to do to maintain the grand list. But, so it doesn't eliminate them all. We don't know what the, the accreditation tier is going to be for the state that's going to mandate. Right now, the state does have a training program if you want to be accredited appraiser or assessor. And it's, you know, this course study. And then to go to the next tier, you have to have that course study completed in two years of working as a Lister. Or as that level assessor. Then you can take more course study and then you have three years of working. So that's to get, to be a certified assessor or appraiser. Whether that's the education they're going to require of the listers, we don't know. It hasn't been, the, the, what's on the website for their training is 2022.
So.
Yes.
If um the time comes, a town is supposed to do a reappraisal and you don't have certified listers, they take up the legislation and saying, you've got to go hire a contractor, as you oftentimes would anyways.
Right.
And what this report is talking about is they're sort of learning about what's out there for resources to, to get that done. When that happens and they say, go hire a contractor, well, I guess that's my, do they say to the town, you need to go hire somebody under this standard? Or is the state going to do that? And then, and then if they do that, do they send us the bill?
Right.
Or how does it get paid for?
We don't know any of that. So right now, so this, this appraisal that is the state would take over doing all the appraisals for all the towns. And if you notice that they lumped
Yeah.
the towns into different groups based on population, okay? So that, because they recognize there are some towns that could take, you know, a couple of years by themselves. And a lot of these towns, an appraisal will take two years. Problem is, there's not enough certified appraisers out there that some of these appraisers are saying, okay, you get a bid in, you get a proposal, but your, their work isn't starting for two years. Okay, so you have them under contract to start within two years because you have that much delay. It's like scheduling a wedding. They tell you you have to do it a year and a half in advance to get your venue. This is the same thing with the appraisers. So right now, the town will not, the little listers have never been the ones to do the townwide appraisal. They've hired firms to do it, okay? So that would be the case. This, this six-year program is looking like, and it's not clear how they're going to implement it. They're saying towns need to be reappraised every six years. We're in this list, but where in that rotation are we going to fall that the state does it? It's very well possible the state tax department gives us a order to reappraise separate from the state right now.
Just as we always have done in the past.
Correct, because like right now, there are numerous towns under appraisal orders that are actively undergoing reappraisal. The state has not taken control of those reappraisals. They have contracts with independent appraisers. This is a plan. It's like the implementation of the every six years isn't starting until like 2005, 2006. So this is rolling, so whether or not our, it used to be a common level of appraisal, but now it's, it's a COD and I can never remember that without having to look at coefficient of dispersion, right, yes.
Dispersed, yeah.
So right now, our number is still good, so that we're not, but if you looked at it under common level appraisal, we were required to be reappraised.
So.
So am I to understand, as I have heard, they don't even have enough certified appraisers?
Well, if you look at the list that was uh in the, there's a, there's a list, um, and maybe I, I, it's not in your information, it's not in that report, but I have a list. There's only a few in the state that are actual certified appraisers. So what the state's gonna do, I do not know. I don't know how they plan on doing it, if there's gonna be, uh, you know, appraisers from out of state, they're gonna be licensed to be able to come in and do this state. I do not know. But that's where like the Vermont. But that's where like the Vermont Association of Listers and Appraisers and different groups and towns are all working to try to get the state to answer these questions. And the district advisors are being very helpful, but they don't have the information either, and they're directly working with property evaluation, PVR. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of unknowns. But I would say that, and I think Marsha and I and, and Jack have agreed that, you know, we are looking at a possibility of a couple of years from now, within a couple of years, being ordered because our number is edging closer and closer and closer to 20, to be, because you're having such an extreme what are properties are praised for versus what they're selling for because of this market, creating that number to become an order. So will we be required to reappraise prior to the state taking over?
So if that happens, or if, even if it doesn't, and we, we still don't know how the states can implement, implement this rolling six-year rule in the future, if it becomes our responsibility to obtain the contractor and pay for it. Question came up in the budget discussion last time about that reappraisal fund. So the state's sending us money every year, it's going into this fund that accumulates over time towards the cost of reappraisal. And the question was, well, how much should we be saving?
And that's a question that we don't know, whether we should be using it or whether we should be saving it. Right now, there's 232,000 or 233,000 dollars in that reappraisal fund. Now, one of the questions that was posed to me by Mary and the board last week was to see if I could figure out other towns similarly situated to ours as to what they are spending for appraisal. I, I went through every town that's under a current reappraisal order, compared their population to us and to their parcel count, came up with two that are very similar to ours, within 100 parcels, 50 people, you know, whatever. One was Wyndham County, or Windsor County, or Windsor. The other one's Woodstock, Vermont. I've emailed both asking for their information, and Windsor, I mean, or Woodstock did get back to me. So I can give you information on a similar situation to kind of give you an idea what we might be looking at. So Rutland Town has a population of 3298. Woodstock has a population of 30,000, I mean, 3, 3,298. Woodstock has a population of 3,020. Parcel count is residential parcel count. Rutland Town has a parcel count of 1,937, and Woodstock has a parcel count of 1,976. So we are very, very similar to them. The town listers reported to me that they have a contract for 193,200 dollars with NEMIC, which is a offshoot of the Numeric area, okay?
Could you repeat that?
193,200 dollars with NEMIC, including software changes. And they use, they don't use Numeric, they use the Patriot system, which is a totally different valuation, you know, keeping track of the money and the values of the properties. We use Numeric, they use Patriot. But they also have a contract for the Woodstock and Resort properties with Saucy Appraisal Firm for 60,000. So that's a total between the, all of them, because Woodstock Properties has very, it's a very different entity. You've got properties over there that have businesses within their properties, you know, they have the stores, they have, they have the restaurants within their properties, they have the ski, they have the tennis club, they have rental housing or housing for all their employees. So they have, they've allotted, they have a contract with a different appraisal firm just to do the Woodstock Resort properties for 60,000. Total to reappraise that entire town in all corporate businesses and whatever for real estate is 253,200.
Do you have any sense of how our commercial profile would impact that? Would it be more because of the types of businesses that we have in the town?
Um, you know, I, I don't, I can't look at what the Woodstock Resort, from my knowledge of what the Woodstock Resort is and what we look at when we drive by and we see, you know, their properties are very different than most of our business properties. I think it's a very unique property, and I think that's why it would require a very different appraisal. You know, somebody that's just focusing on their, their type of business, because it's, you know, tourism, it's industry, it's, you know, everything that they have. Whereas, you know, we don't have a business that is that spread out, that's under one business, you know what I'm saying? These are all very different. So I, I can't really comment that much that I have a better understanding, but I can't see that based on those parcel counts and stuff, that it's gonna be that drastically different.
Well, but those were residential parcel counts. I'm just thinking about the retail and the industry that we also have, and maybe Marsha could comment on that from history.
Our commercial base is so much larger than any other
It is.
state of Vermont. We bring, um, you know, we're just so diversified. We, we've got, you know, that residential, we've got commercial, we've got the malls. We have an awful lot of, you know, diversified, different businesses. And they all demand a different way of reappraisal. We also have, we also have utilities. Utilities bring, are, you know, huge in Rutland Town.
So 250 to 300,000 could be realistic. And based on the numbers we have, we've got about 230. Two more years, you're gonna have another 37. So you're gonna be up around 270. If we gotta do this in two years, we'll probably have the money and the funds.
We don't spend it.
Well, we, we'll, we'll get that.
We don't intend on spending it.
Yeah, the, the point is, I think the bigger point is finding somebody to do it. And I think getting, you know, if, if we thought that we had
I heard Marsha say in her opening that she was going to be putting together a bid proposal, so we could at least start seeing who might buy.
That would be a practical approach to this, would be to anticipate a year or two delay, and if we're gonna need to do this in two years, we might want to start now.
Correct.
And, and get somebody on board. If we hired somebody to do it in 2026, we'll say, and, and we'll know, we'll have money. I don't know, maybe the state will have their end figured out by then, but I'm not gonna hang by my thumbs waiting. Because they're, they're fixing a system that, or they're trying to do something to a system that doesn't appear to be broken. Um, this, each town doing their own on a schedule seems to work, but I don't know why they want to get in the middle.
We don't either.
No.
I don't think they even know what
The only thing I
They want to be able to grab on to every last nickel, is what they want to do.
Right, the point that I'm thinking is maybe their theory is that all towns aren't getting appraised the same. So a more realistic approach would be to set up a, an appraisal standard and then make whoever a town hires follow this standard.
That's kind of what Marshall and Swift has been.
You know, that's a much simpler thing, so, you know, if the town wants to be proactive, which is usually a good way to be, is we should anticipate getting this done. So we'll be 13 years out or 12 years out, and like you said, when, once we get down to that CLA of 80, then we're, we have to do something.
Right.
So, you know, right now, we'll have almost enough money to do it.
The COD.
Yeah.
Yeah, the CLA doesn't come into play anymore.
Not anymore, well, whatever the numbers are, but it's the same thing, whatever.
Right. If I could just interject, so the, the towns that are under the current orders, and Woodstock is one that's under the current order, and just for your knowledge, and you're absolutely, and this is why Marsha and I and Jack have talked about, you know, and we've, we've pulled proposals, the state district advisors are very good in giving us like information on what needs to go in those proposals, so we'll be able to put one together. But as Marsha said, we're gonna be putting that proposal together to start putting out. Because Woodstock, even though they're under an order, their appraisal can't start till 2025, and it's to be completed in 2027. This is the contract they're already in in 2020.
So we're probably already behind.
So, well, we're not behind, I don't think, because they've been ordered, we have not been ordered. So I think we'll probably be ordered within a year or two.
Is there a penalty when, when a town gets into the position Woodstock thin? Are they being penalized?
No.
No.
No, because what the state wants to see is that you have a plan. If you have a plan, that's all that matters to them, is that you have a plan of reappraisal.
Ahead of the game.
So does Woodstock have a personal property tax?
I do not believe so.
Okay, so are costs maybe even more if we need to do a reappraisal of personal property?
Uh, I'm not sure, so I can always check, but I'm not sure if they do.
Sharon?
Yeah. Question, how long does it train somebody that's certified to do this?
So, um, that is, that's one of the things that I also looked up, because I know that there's discussions about that. So, um, the training for an appraiser?
It would be able to do what we would have to hire somebody to do.
So you would want to probably, the town would want to hire an appraiser, regardless, I think. You know, but if you have independent, if you hire an assessor or an appraiser who's listed to do that, they're still gonna need help to do a full townwide appraisal, because that's a, that's a huge undertaking.
Right.
You know, you're going to revisit every single home, remeasuring, doing all of that. But that's not to say that your assessor who's on task, like the city has a full-time assessor. They have hired an appraisal firm, okay? So, I mean, it's not like that person can do that by themselves. But to have a full-time assessor versus, or an appraiser, it's a several-year. So let me just, let me just, here's a tree. So I have, I have some of this stuff for you. So for just the appraiser to become a certified assessor. You, you have the Vermont Property Assessor Level 1 is all course requirements for a Level 1, which is a, a real estate property appraisal workshop, and then some state-sponsored lister training workshop, okay? However, in order to move to the next Level 2, you have to do that Level 1 assessor for two years. Okay, or an equivalent. So then, to get Level 2, you have to have all the previous training before, plus have, and these are uh, stan- industry standard courses, okay? They're not all the training that's done by the state. Um, this is in, uh, International Assessors and Appraisers Organization. This is an, an international association for assessing. Okay, so these are workshops. So to get to the Level 2 Property Assessor, you have to have the two years of experience as a Level 1 assessor, plus you have to take one, two, three more courses, and then state-sponsored data collection kit course, which is a four-day course, but which is offered to us as listers, which we've already done. Okay, that's what allows us to be able to go out and measure the porches and the houses and things like that. But again, we're inputting that information into a system that's already built from the numbers based on the appraisals that Numeric puts together based on that appraisal, okay?
Right.
So then, you have, to go to the full three-year Property Assessor 3, you have to have three years, three years of experience as a VPA Level 2. Okay, so now you're looking at two years and then three more, so that's five years before, plus you have to take additional courses and additional training and land appraisal workshops and statutes and rules. Now, we've already done the land appraisal workshop, we've already done the statutes and rules, which they offer to us as listers. So, but it's the delay in working, you know, having to work under those levels to be a certified assessor. So, one of the things you'll read, if you, if you were to go into the Vermont Assessors Program, and they'll say, what is the difference between a certified assessor and a lister? Nothing, except the level of training. You have the same obligation to know what you're doing, to maintain the thing, and then you get the training. But, so when I say that, I'm talking about for the assessors. So, but I, coming into this job in June, I can tell you, without that training that I've attended at the state and that Jack and I have gone and Marsha have gone to, I wouldn't know what I was doing. You know, there, that pulls it together is what you're doing. Doing a lister job is, is, it's a very fun, I love it, we all know I love it, I'm just, you know, thriving on it. But it's complicated, because you have to learn, there's five computer programs to learn in that room. In addition to also knowing how to go on to the Vermont State Mapping Program and how to draw all your, and, and doing all the computerization for mapping out. So we went to a house, we did all the measurements, we've, we've done all that, we've brought it back, we entered the data, and I've learned how to do all the sketching and the drawing and things like that. So, but you wouldn't get there, and you wouldn't know how the pieces interact with each other or how the programs interact with each other without the training. You know, the basic training. The data collection class pulls it all together, tells you why you're doing what, and, you know, for the number one question I had as a lister was, what is the basis for the price of an acre here in Rutland Town? How does that information come to be, you know? But you've since learned it, right? So it's, so the training that they're gonna require by the listers, I can't tell you if it's gonna be this level of training or the level of training that we've already done that they offered to the listers anyway.
Let me ask another question then, because we've got a, there's a line for lister education in the proposed budget.
Correct.
What do we put in there? Do we know who's going to be providing the training and what the charge will be?
Usually the train, so, so far what I've seen, any of the training, it is gonna be the state. The state has been mandated under this new law to, to put in $100,000 from the education funding from the state for training listers. And, and, and assessors and or appraisers or whatever, whatever elected official is coming in for all these different towns. So they're not eliminating the position, they may be limiting what we're doing. But in essence, you know, like, so like I said, we do a lot that has nothing to do with actually walking out into the field and appraising a house.
But even if you were willing, if you or any of you were willing to do all this, and then you ran for office and, and somebody else beat you, then it's
That's, that's the thing, that's, that's a, that's a discussion the town has to have on a different day as to whether or not there's valuation and, and doing that, you know, continuing what we're, we're doing. I mean, it's like talking myself out of a job, I'm elected official, but you're absolutely right. You know, if somebody doesn't like me or doesn't want me in or doesn't know what type of work I've done
And you got two years into learning this.
And you're gone.
And then you're done.
Right.
So that's a concern that you have
That part of it probably isn't practical unless these were hired positions and you had to do it.
Right, in the state, in the state
And then that would be different.
The state courses that are offered, I would say, you know, that is a continuation, you know, that, because they do them every year. You know, there's the introduction to the new lister training that's mandated for new and, and old listers, it's mandatory for every lister in the state, so, you know, to get it. So, you know, you're still doing that training. And it just gives you a refresher course on all the things that the listers have to do and being non-biased and things like that. There are gonna be new, uh, trainings on making sure your lister is unbiased or your assessor is unbiased. That, that's gonna be a requirement, that we haven't had any training in that. But so like the, the data collection class and the land valuation class, land schedule training, land schedule training, I won't bore you, it's just learning how to value a piece of land without any development on it. And all of that is offered every year. It's, you know, you do it part of your lister duties, you tune in and you learn it, and it's very valuable. There's no cost to the town from that training, because it's offered by, we're not paying enrollment funds to do that.
For the purposes of budgetary planning for 2024, 25, sounds like we don't need to add lister training money?
I don't know that, because I don't know what the state, so I would say that if there is a budget item number there, and I haven't seen the proposed budget.
$50.
That's it. Okay, Marsha.
That might want to be more.
You know, I don't know what the state, because I, I do know they're allotting $100,000 worth of training for listers. And so, does that mean we can just log in without an expenditure?
Yeah.
That's coming down the pike. I can't tell you the answer, because I don't know. And I don't think Marsha knows, I don't think any of us know.
Because then I was gonna go to the next one that we were starting to, you know, get into, and that's the personal property tax and the Gaal Gantic request. And so we're tossing around, I had a very long talk, and a very good talk with Jack McCamley. And I know Sharon had a long talk with you, so we're gathering information as best we can. The question that pops up is, do we, um, do a contract with Gail but take it out of the reappraisal fund?
I wouldn't.
I would.
And that's, so, so give us advice either way on that. It's, it's beginning to sound like we may need it in a couple of years to pay for a townwide reappraisal.
Was to go into a discussion on the contract at Gail Gantik, I would ask that we go into executive session.
Oh, what?
Ask that we go into an executive session.
Okay.
Okay, even, well, it, let's.
But should we, should we agree?
Yeah.
To enter that contract or to?
Let's say a contract for the purposes of, so we are not limiting it to one person or one entity, but should we have a contract to do the personal property valuation? And then we can keep it in open session at least for figuring out where the money comes from.
Sure, so assume we have a contract and it's for a set amount of money. Should it come out of the general budget or should we be taking it out of the state reappraisal funds? According to, and I think everybody here knows, um, it is available out of the state reappraisal money on select board approval. The question that's been posed is whether or not the state, what is it going, state going to do if they take over the reappraisal? But again, you're looking at, will we be doing a reappraisal before the state takes over the reappraisal from six years from that last appraisal? Because we're already out, the last statutory appraisal we did was in 2013.
So we're already out the six years, yeah.
Right, so, um, would, would, does the work on the business personal property for that valuation, the money is, is, could be used for that, and it can be earmarked for that? That's, that's a decision that is.
I think that's a bad, that's still a bad idea.
If the, if the general budget can absorb the thirty thousand, then I would say put it through the general budget.
We need to have a better discussion and, and, and I don't, uh, disagree with you. Usually contracts are discussed in, um, executive session. But I will put this out to the board for, the numbers do not match the information. Because I, I have information from last year, the minutes from last year. And I kept these because that's one of the benefits of being home, you have this stack of minutes about this high. So when you're bored, you go look through the stack of minutes and you find what you're looking for. And I get, and, and I have, the numbers don't match. The information and the numbers don't match. And, and before, I would agree to put any sum in the general budget for the personal property tax. I do believe we need to do this. I don't know if we need to do it every year because we don't reappraise regular property every year. Um, we need to get some, a better understanding, okay? Um, if you, if you start taking the price per parcel or per account, two hundred and eighteen, and you multiply that by the amount per account, you get a number. And then if you take the information that says this is a four-year endeavor to do this, it, it blows those numbers right out of the things because the amount was for one year at the thirty grand. And, but we're only going to do a quarter of the properties, where this is a four-year ordeal. That makes those value per property four times what it should have been. So there was either some misinformation given to us or misunderstanding because the numbers just don't work. If you took one quarter of the two hundred and eighteen properties, it's fifty-four and a half, not that I've done this. And you divide and you multiply that times the amount, the new amount, which is a hundred and thirty-seven, you come up with a roughly seventy-five thousand dollars per year to do one quarter. And if it's a four-year endeavor, that means you have to put about seventy-five hundred dollars a year into the budget to do these at the hundred and thirty-seven. If you put thirty thousand in there, that's enough to do all two hundred and eighteen, but we're not doing them in one year, we're doing them over four. So this is where.
No.
But this, this is the information, Marie, that's, that was given to the board, and this is the minute says they were written.
Right, and so that's one of the reasons that I kind of spearheaded and Marcia asked, you know, if I could help spearhead. So there is information that needs to come from the board during executive session, would be a disadvantage to the town if I was to speak to that. But I can speak to, the premise of business personal property is an annual assessment of tangible property. It's not real estate. It's, it's machinery, it's equipment, it's books, it's paper, it's supplies, it's inventory. It's, it's an annual assessment. So this is done every year to every business in the town. Right now, there's two hundred and twenty-nine accounts. Those accounts actually have, so the town chose, and I didn't go back to find out when, but I know the town chose, and I can, I can give you each one of these if you would like, and I can give a copy to Bill to make part of the record, um, if you want to pass them.
Yeah.
This is, this is, what you have in front of you is the town's personal property tax return form that is sent to all business personal property holders in the town, all known. Okay? Okay, so you will see that what this form does is ask the taxpayer, the business personal property taxpayer. So when they get this form, they get a copy of the assessment from the previous year. Okay, that is confidential by nature. So it's not, you know, we keep them locked in our, in our room because it's not public information. They get a copy of their inventory, their equipment, their books. What they're charged to do every year is to identify any changes, additions, deletions, new furniture, old furniture, new computers, retired computers, new lades, new vehicles on their lot, anything that's part of the personal property, okay? If they're also, so you look at, there's furniture, there's machinery and equipment, there's computers, there's a line item for items added and deleted, there's leased, that's your copiers, that's any property that is rented by a business to employ their business, and then there's your inventory. And part of that inventory is raw materials, part of that inventory is the cost to produce the goods, part of the inventory is to ship. Every one of those is valued in a different manner. There are several ways to get a fair market value. One is the cost approach, one's the income approach, one's the sales approach. And for machinery and equipment and raw materials, it's a combination of all of them, okay? So that's the thing, so this is done annually. Each business is required to produce this. If they don't, it can be penalized, um, which we carry penalties on this. What, what the town is charged with is doing an audit of this information for each business every year.
So this is similar to what I used to do in the city for my office. Now, I didn't get into most of the backside, but there were furniture fixtures and computers.
Correct, I did it for the old law firm.
There you go.
Yes.
So it, it wasn't that bad and it wasn't.
If you're small.
If you're small, that's right.
If you're small.
Right, now I know we have some very, very large businesses in town.
Show you these, but I, I.
You know, Marie, I, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
But I'm not as concerned about what this entails. It's, it's the terms of this contract.
Correct, so that was, we would have to go into.
Right, to do, but, but I, the, the necessity and the nuts and bolts of this part of it, I don't know, the, the board may not have, I've seen these before. And so, and I think most of us kind of know what this is. It's, we need to discuss the need and the amount.
Correct.
Okay. And, and, and I don't think, I mean, and I didn't want to, you don't need to, I don't want to take up any more of your time trying to explain the form and what it's for, because I think we all got a pretty good grasp of this end of it. Um, but the services provided, um, we need to get a handle on what we're paying for and maybe some of the why. Um, I, I know that things change every year. So, so there's a need that, that maybe the two hundred and twenty-nine need to be reviewed every year. I, I don't know if that is.
Four years, it's every year.
So, so like I say, what was given to us for information last year is not consistent with what we're doing. And, and that's why I think the board, we need, that's what we need to get to the bottom of.
And I, and I'm fully prepared to.
You've requested an executive session to get into the details of the contract. Are you prepared to make any motion to go into executive session to, for the drill down part?
Yeah, I would. I'd make a motion that we, we do the, do it in an executive session for contract reasons.
And we have Marcia.
And myself.
And Marie stay with us.
Yes, yeah, because, whatever.
Okay, the motion's made, is there a second? Did you second it?
I did.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, uh, executive session, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay, we're in executive session, executive session. And we'll start first with a motion concerning item C under action needed. Was there a motion?
Oh, it's my turn. I'd move that we pull item C off the table and, uh, retract it for the time being.
Okay, so the motion is to take off the table, um, and then retract the adding money to pay the contract for Gail Gantik. And motion's made?
Second.
There's a, um, motion's made inside a general discussion. Just is, is this a reflection on any particular contractor or just something we're not going to deal with right now?
Correct. Something we're not going to deal with currently.
Okay. Um, any further discussion, any questions from the lister about what we're doing or?
No, I, my understanding is it's just a budget approval for the thirty thousand to be able to do business.
And we'll get to that in a moment.
Okay.
Okay, so we're taking off the table and then we're dismissing and, and dealing away with the, uh, the question of the contract. So all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, it's unanimous in favor. Now, um, are there any? But we're moving over to the general budget discussion.
The general budget already reflects what it needs to reflect in the appraisal update. So we'll leave that be, and then we'll just, uh, move down to the public safety building.
Well, question, do we do, do, do we do anything with lister education?
Oh, yeah.
We should, um, in anticipation of possible needs, I think fifty dollars won't get you much. So we probably should look at at least five hundred in there just to be good.
Yeah.
So I'll take that as a motion to add five hundred second. This is the line, um, six, four, one, lister education. All in favor of putting in five hundred, please say aye.
Aye. Marcia, did you hear that?
Yes, I did, Karen, yep.
Okay, okay. Now, um, actually I think that is it for lister issues, so thank you both very much for hanging in there.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Now, I appreciate all of the work you put into this.
Thank you.
Take care.
You did put in an awful lot of work in.
Yes.
You know, in, in light of, of, you know, what my family's been experiencing, she, uh, she is invaluable. And I, you know, working together, I've supplied her with, um, a lot of information that we were able to, you know, coagulate and come up with, you know, some good program.
Yes, and I appreciate that. I enjoy going over to the lister's office, it's a great feeling.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Come in and we'll give you a full. Yeah, you can sit with us anytime and, uh, you know, watch over our shoulders to what we do every day.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate the offer. Okay, um, so we're now on the general budget. I do believe we are at the next to the last page, just below the lister education line we just adjusted. So we have, um, public safety building maintenance, there's an item of two thousand dollars. Any, and then under public safety building electricity, the proposal is nineteen hundred. Public safety building heating fuel, there is no item in there.
So I'm looking at the fire department's numbers.
I'm looking at an old version.
Oh.
There should have been one in your, uh, did you get the one in your packet? There was one in the packet.
There was.
I've got the one dated twelve nineteen.
That's correct. That's the packet one. The electricity number, I went on to Green Mountain Power and I pulled the, the, the last two years' worth of bills and averaged it out and added a little, and that's what, what it worked out, what it could be for, for a twelve-month period.
This is for McKinley as it was?
Yes.
So, so we're using, and I, and I just want to clarify this only, Bill, because we spent fifty-six hundred and twenty-four dollars on electricity for the fire budget last year.
Mm-hmm.
And we were figuring that thirty-six hundred of that is at this station over here.
Yeah, so I, I, I.
That is absolutely unacceptable. An energy efficient building.
Well, but that building has heat pumps and depending upon how long, what they're set for and how long they run for, they could, we had a problem here where heat pumps got turned on and left on, and.
So we thinking we're having the same problem?
It could be.
Yeah.
But I went on, so I pulled, I, so I, I, we have, we have all the electric bills on, accessible online. I, so I went and pulled McKinley's bills for two years.
Yeah.
Figured out this is what it is per month. Then, and we added a little to that figure and then multiplied it by twelve and came up with, it's a guess, but it's nineteen hundred dollars is, is our guess.
So because we've got two builds, so if we put three thousand in there for electricity on an eight-month year, would that, that be reasonable? I think it's, it's half.
Why aren't we using nine, what?
Because that's a fire, but that's a fire station, now we're going to have a building with both fire and police. So I think we should put a, a larger number because.
Yeah, and I found out today they have.
Yeah, because the police who they're all, you know.
They'll be there more often. We'll put in three, three thousand for a eight-month year, because they're going to start, and, and I think that would be okay to do that. Because, because this is, this is looking in the crystal ball that's really murky.
Yes.
Okay, now, my question is.
More like a snow globe.
Do we reduce, because, and, and I don't like doing this without Chris involved, but do we reduce the fire budget by two? Because you don't, we don't need it in both places. Because what'll end up happening, Chris has got six thousand in there for the two buildings, because that's what he had last year. If he only spends thirty-five hundred, say, or three, four thousand, the other two just gets into the, swept into the capital improvement fund, which I'm just wondering if we just reduce it by the nineteen hundred and.
One I've got, and this may be old, but this fire one says ninety-five hundred, maybe that was already.
That's, that's fuel. Electricity is, the electricity is six grand.
Electricity.
Six grand, and they actually spent fifty-six twenty-four for electricity for the two buildings. So I'm just thinking, if we just, you know, make his budget look a little better, and we don't need it in two places. So we put four in, in place of six, and, and that'll reduce the fire budget a little bit.
Okay, so what are you proposing?
I'm proposing putting three thousand into the general fund budget for electricity for the public safety building and four thousand in the fire budget for electricity. And.
So we've got to redo the fire, which we kind of knew.
Okay.
And i- is Bill working on both numbers?
Cause I will, I could hit both.
Well, I would like to vote on the damn things tonight.
Right.
Do you want me to go get new sheets?
Um, let's just finish that because there's only two numbers, so we're going to do probably two sheets after we make these adjustments.
Right, and then the other adjustment is the heating fuel.
Yep.
And it's, and Chris has ninety-five hundred in, and I don't know the breakdown between fuel and whatever. So if you, if we, let's say we'll take twenty-five hundred off and leave him seven for center station.
So twenty-five hundred for here?
And then for the other building, I don't know, I don't, it's propane, you might be five thousand in that building.
Okay, I can't tell which building you're talking about.
I'm taking, so we'll take the fire station budget, we'll take twenty-five hundred off of Chris's budget, leave seven thousand.
Seven thousand for the.
Heating.
Fire budget.
Yeah, and we'll put five thousand in for the new building, which I think is high, but I don't know.
What was the to?
It's one of those things, it's going to. It's going to be, it's going to either be enough or it's going to be too much.
Yeah.
So public safety building heating fuel is now five thousand?
Yeah. And that's.
On the general budget, so do you have those numbers? On the general budget. So do you have those numbers?
No.
Okay.
But I do, I do now. So I do, I can go and plug this in real quick and.
Plug it in also to the fire budget.
Yes, and we just redo so.
So Lister Education is 500, public safety electricity 3,000, public safety heating 5,000.
And we left 2,000 for maintenance.
Cause that'll cover like. Fire electric goes to 4,000, fire heating goes 7,000.
Right. Launch a rocket.
We got anything else to talk about?
No, this isn't going to take.
I think the rest of the general budget, those were just the only items out, right? Those last five items.
Those were.
One, two, three, four, five, and look at that, they're all right together, happy little campers. And then whatever Bill's got left to do.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing, it's going to be a short, that'll be a short budget year. We figure if they move in November 1st, you're looking at a. Uh, eight month year. So. There'll be some, and then we'll have a better, uh, kind of a handle on that.
All right, so this one pager town budget, total town budget, that needs to be adjusted and I'm not even going to look at that.
Throw that in the grab, because that just got changed. That one they can do.
Fire, this is an old.
I did keep the copies from the other night, but I don't think, don't have to get new copies.
Yeah, it's kind of weird.
There is. For, this is for your information. There is the petition for a certificate of public for the Post Roads Solar LLC. Um, and they have, remember they gave us the 45 day notice. This is, and we went up and did a, the planning commission did, and I joined them. This now has the actual, this is the whole application. So it's in. And we have, I think there was some comment that Barbara made at the last one about, oh, they're now showing solar. Panels in the area we thought was to be set aside for historical significance. So we may want to ask that question next time. But this went in on December 26th.
That's for, I thought that place got excavated, didn't it?
I thought there were some test, whatever.
They, they did it and I thought it was a field somewhere in there by Kerry's because.
It was up behind Kerry's.
Read that field right adjacent to Kerry's because we were chopping grass in there one year and there's all these little metal flags all through that field. That I had to get out because they, they flagged out these spots and then they left them there. And I spent hours out there and then actually I ended up dumping two loads of feed. Out in the woods because I didn't know if I ran some of that metal through there. And Joseph and Galley was, um. Here and I got the information of who did it and I made a phone call or I think I sent, I might even sent a letter and told them that if one of my cows drops dead, they're going to be. Paying for a lot because that's an active agricultural field and they left all these little metal stakes with little flags.
I was laughing.
When one was going through the chopper, it was like crap. So I just took the load and dumped it over there.
Harold and Mark were out chopping for corn silage. And they came upon a patch of marijuana. The corn plants had been picked up and the marijuana planted. They had to make this decision. Do we call the cops? Do we shut down the operation? They didn't. They just chopped it and put it in.
Happiest cows in town.
Okay, now we're being handed.
Cow's got a little buzz off it and there you go.
Isn't it good with technology being what it is, Bill?
Okay, so let's start with fire budget. There should be two changes.
Are there?
And let's do the line number, building electricity. Um, this is line O22. Has been reduced to 4,000. Okay, and where's the other one? Heating, which is three lines down from that, has been reduced to 7,000. Okay? So I'll entertain, any other changes, Bill, on that one? Okay, fire budget. All in favor of making those changes to the fire budget? Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
I ask you actually one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Bill, on these net change figures, those have all been. Checked now.
Yes, it was.
Okay, okay. Let's do this again. All in favor of the revised fire budget, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
These old sheets that I had on other budgets that would not have that. So they probably had pitched a lot.
I would, I would not keep those.
Yeah.
Don't keep anything that's dated before today.
Well, except for the ones we've passed. So now we're on to the general budget. Which is the one, actually it shouldn't say draft date of 1219. It should say one, two, 24. And if we go to the next to the last page. Um, the appraisal update stays at 30,000. Uh, the Lister Education goes up to 5,000.
5,000.
Sorry, 5, 500. Public safety building maintenance goes to 2,000. Public safety building electricity to 3,000. Public safety building heating fuel to 5,000. And. So I think that was, those were the only changes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
The general budget. Motion's made and seconded to approve the general budget as presented. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Uh, that's unanimous. Okay, one, two, 24.
So the next time we meet, we're going to be at the school.
Correct.
Actually, I'm sorry. Yeah. This net change figure though. Still significantly more, or maybe I'm thinking of the total one. When you recalculated this before, the number was a lot smaller and they raised, to be raised by taxes.
There were, well, I guess it depends on what was included and what wasn't, but.
We just added about. It's six, seven.
I'm not making the kind of difference I'm thinking of.
You know, I don't know about you, but I find it confusing that second one, net general budget change from 2223 to 2324. I don't know why that's in there.
Okay, now I remember why that's the way it is. I think that is correct. I'm thinking of the, the overall net net. Which is probably not reflecting.
It's an, it's a negative, it's, it is weird because, because the general budget generally operates in a negative.
Right, because of the personal property.
Negative.
The computer doesn't know what to do with it.
Smaller negative number is better. It's, it's, it's a weird, it's a weird relationship.
Okay.
So, yeah, we do run, we run the math, but it runs backwards. Yeah. So the, I did add. Um, on the, on the total budget page, the.
Oh, I just tossed that.
That's okay. So there's the amount to be raised by taxes. Um, I, I, I added the column to the, to the left for. The fiscal budget we're in right now and the proposed budget. So there, you can see the difference between the two, but, um. The anticipated income includes, this year includes the police money. That was, and that was the problem in the calculation before, we didn't include the police money because it was in a different section. So. Um, so those numbers should be correct.
So when you look, when you look down here. Bottom right hand corner, the net overall difference to be raised by taxes is 5.57. That number used to be a lot larger because.
Yes.
Right.
Five point.
Right.
It was almost double.
I probably do because I threw them both out.
Guess it wasn't the one looks like.
5.57.
Yeah.
That's so many.
That more better?
At least you're reading the same thing we all are.
So net overall budget change from 2324 to 2425 is 15%.
Yep.
And how do we explain that? Oh, because we're using the hotel money.
Because we're hiring another officer, including the money to do that. That, that was, that was one of the biggest additional expenses, but we're offsetting it. So that's why, that's why the overall to raise by taxes doesn't pace the actual buzz, budget increase.
Yeah.
There was also some, uh, uh, grants, uh, income, I think that was reflected in that number. So there's making, if you're just looking at.
And trying to keep highway money out of that was, so yeah, there, there's some, there's some ins and outs and pluses and minuses.
Like the highway budget's a million, $86,000, but the amounts to be raised by taxes will be 966,000. Because we rely on 120 state aid to grant.
So the difference is.
What we've got to look at is when we present that, that budget is one of the few, but I just, I always, I missed it one year, but I'll be on top of it.
We did.
The, the amount to be raised by taxes, the budget will be 1,860, amount to be raised taxes will be 966.
And same here, the, the number we want people to focus on is the.
5.57%.
Right.
Because we are using other sources of income.
I mean, I've, I've already been questioned about.
Well.
The hunt, you know, well, I, I don't, I didn't read the article in the Herald, but I'm, I'm guessing from the comment I got from my sister-in-law was. That we were hiring an officer and paying 150,000 and she wanted to apply for the job.
Oh.
And I, so I explained to her, no, that, that is not correct. The officer's salary is approximately 60 grand and then with benefits and, and other costs of the town, we're going to be around 90. The other 60 is for direct patrols that, and, and that money is not tax money, that's hotel money, which eased her.
Yes.
Um, thing, I said, now for 60 grand, if you want to go out and get shot at, I'll tell Ed to come and look at you. But anyway, I'm glad people are paying attention.
See, the thing is every other town now in the city have come out with their percent increase and. That's why the 5.57% is what we focus on. That's, that's the total. We're taking advantage both of the, um, hotel funds and of grant money.
To note, however.
Yeah.
There's a headline writer at, uh, Brown Herald that did no favors to Tonic Castle Tim.
Oh.
Who may, who may have made perfectly good decisions and then, you know.
Yeah.
Later on, when the increase got included in the budget, the center dropped, they got whack.
So.
We haven't, Marie hasn't got to you yet.
No, I think perhaps we should.
And, and I figured you've got a list. I, I don't have much, actually. I don't, I don't have much.
Bill Sweet, I'm administrative assistant to the select board.
And I left the list in the other room, so it's even shorter. Um, so I, I did take the opportunity to print off a nice clean version of the street sidewalk ordinance. So don't run away, you can sign it while you're still here. And I got all the dates added into that. Um, the, you asked about the private fire.
Let me go back to this. What's the process now for making these, the amendments effective?
You all sign this and then there are, we have to post the notice around, um. It's the second to last page here. Um, if there's, gets notices posted around, uh, it gets posted in the paper, on the website, and we wait 60 days. And if a percentage of voters don't come forth and say, we don't want this, then it goes into effect within 60 days. So it's pretty easy.
We did, yes, we did. So.
Um, and so there's that. Uh, we talked about the private fire hydrant ordinance. I have had. One property owner ask if we provide a list of vendors, which we do not, uh, because we don't have them. Um, but we have tried to get some feedback, which is, which is really nice. Uh, the other thing was I got, um, uh. I sent, I sent the same letter to the fire district, to Howard, uh, about this, and he says that they are not considered private fire hydrants, they are town owned hydrants. And he thinks the committee has it wrong. It does say in the ordinance that specifically says fire districts own their hydrants, even in the town right of way. Uh, I don't know if we came to an agreement or not, but, but the language does say that they belong to the fire district and they are considered private. So.
Well, they got to deal with them.
They're the whole reason that that ordinance exists.
And that, um, and Howard did confirm that the whole infrastructure is going to be going to West Rutland anyway. So, but we should, when, when the committee can meet, maybe, maybe later on this month or, or next month, we can, we can go over some of the changes. But there's not, not many, so.
So if Wes Rutland takes over that.
When?
When?
Yeah.
Will they still be private or will it? Now it's become owned by a town, but not this town.
Well, so there, there, part of the language change in the ordinance we should put in is other entity because it does kind of, it does kind of pigeonhole.
They'll probably take care of them.
They, I imagine they would. So, um, and which, which is fine. So that, that's, that's okay. Uh, but we've actually, and actually Howard gave me one more that we had missed on our other list. So we, we, we got another one on the list now, but all of them have been added to. The nine and one maps and they are showing up on, I am responding, which is, which is great. So, um, that's a huge, a huge thing. And. I think that's it. We're all set for the school. I will have plenty of copies of the budget sheets, town reports, anything else you can think of that.
Our portion.
Our portion is seven.
Yeah, no, the board meeting.
5:30.
5:30.
That's the date.
Five, the 16th, next, next, next regular meeting.
There for the school boards because I want to hear their.
Oh.
Proposals.
Yeah.
Probably going to run longer.
That might run longer. Uh, we, we generally do an abbreviated agenda. So that's.
Yeah.
Really important topic. So that way we can, we can make sure to be out and done and.
One of the things that I, you know, I don't know what they're proposing, what the school is proposing on their budget and then their proposed. I've heard a bond for.
Yeah.
Updoing, finishing that second story and whether they're together or separate. Does anybody know?
No.
Okay. Um, and I still don't have any quotes on a full quotes back yet on the electric vehicle station, but the grant still is out there. Um, it, it's, it's, it's a wonderful opportunity. So I'm, I'm, when I, when I get some information, I'll try and get it to, to you guys and so you can look it over. But it's a, it's a 5% match. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a phenomenal use of money. So.
What else?
That's all, that's all we got.
Um, don't think any committees met except for finance and you overheard part of it.
The minutes are ready for that one, yeah.
Yep. Um, and we took care of it. So action items, we did A, B, we withdrew C. D, we finished the budgets for fire and general. So we're done. Um, delivered obsession on dire roads passed over, uh, pending information on the survey, if there is one. Um, we've met an executive session. Are there any other items to be considered? Best chance. Any motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Motion made and seconded over here to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.